Everybody ready? Call the meeting. Kelly, could you please? Hold on.
Ms. Bernstein?
Here.
Ms. Krishnaman?
Here.
Ms. Glavine?
Here.
Ms. Yu? Ms. Young?
Here.
Ms. Unical?
Here.
Kelly, if you have trouble hearing, please let us know with the masks.
Okay. There's a 10-second delay, so we're still catching up.
Okay.
Tyler's listening in, though.
Great. First item is the consent agenda. Is there anything anyone would like to pull off of the consent agenda for a discussion? Just getting our hearing done. Is there a motion to approve the consent agenda as presented?
I'll make. I'll make a motion. Take it. Okay.
Okay. And we have a roll call.
Ms. Bernstein?
Yes.
Ms. Krishnaman?
Yes.
Ms. Glavine?
Yes.
Ms. Yu?
Yes.
Ms. Young?
Yes.
Ms. Unical?
Yes.
All right. Well, the next item is for Ed to present the annual audit.
Ed, you can use the audio.
Oh, okay. Well, thank you for having me here this evening. And I'd also like to thank Anna and Kate and everyone on the staff for all their assistance they provided us during the audit this year. We were out here in June, second half of June, doing the majority of our field work. But then, in order to complete the audit, we need to get some information from the village as it relates to IMRF and then the final actuary evaluation for your OPEB plan as well. So as far as our audit, we document our understanding of internal controls. We perform walkthroughs of some transactions to see that the controls that are operating as designed. But we didn't perform additional tests of internal controls because we weren't going to rely on those controls in the design of our audit. It was more efficient to perform extended substantive procedures, so we did that instead. So an audit doesn't necessarily give an opinion on internal control, but if there's things that come to our attention, weaknesses in internal controls that we see, or maybe controls that are lacking, we would bring those to your attention. We did not have any of those. Based on our walkthroughs and our other procedures, we found that the controls seemed to be operating as designed. During our audit, we didn't have any disagreements with management or any restrictions placed on procedures by management that would be required to bring to your attention, so we didn't have any of that. We did propose three adjustments during our audit. Two of them were adjustments to the net pension liability and the total OPEB liability that only affected government-wide financial statements and not the fund financial statements. And these really couldn't be made until we came out here because the information was needed from the village and the OPEB's plan's actuary, which wasn't available at the time of starting field work. So as a result, we made those adjustments during our audit. The third adjustment was just a small adjustment to reconcile fund balance to agree to the prior year audit report. Our audit report includes an opinion on both the government-wide financial statements and the fund financial statements. Our audit opinion was an unmodified opinion, which is the highest moral assurance that we can give that the financial statement's fairly presented. Just a couple highlights. The government-wide financial statements, when I refer to those, those are the first two statements in the report. They have kind of a longer-term focus. So you see, like, on the statement on the position, which is their balance sheet, you'll see long-term assets and long-term liabilities on that. So we have capital assets or fixed assets on the balance sheet that we depreciated over time. We have long-term liabilities, like the net pension liability, the OPEB liability, and the compensated assets payable that get recognized on more of a long-term basis. So under this long-term basis, library had a positive bottom line of about 1.8 million. Additions to capital assets during the year totaled 2.6 million, and depreciation expenses about 1.4 million. In the fund financial statements, where the library reports, it's called a modified approval basis, so it's a little closer to a cash basis. It's not cash basis, but it's a little closer. It's more current-focused. Under the modified approval basis, the library had a combined loss in all funds of 643,000. But that was really all on the capital improvement fund. And that capital improvement fund will fluctuate from year to year depending on when the revenue comes in, usually from bond proceeds or something major like that, versus when it's paid out or spent out, which is a worse than a big income. And then income was spent in the current years, so that's why it has a loss in the current year. The general fund had a positive bottom line of $1,204 after a transfer out of 1,131,150. And that transfer went to the debt service fund and primarily the capital improvement fund. Revenues in the general fund were slightly under budget, less than a half a percent. Expenses were about almost 10% under budget. The biggest area was savings and budget. Budget versus actual in the general fund was in salaries and employee benefits, which was 365,000 under budget for 7.8%. And all major categories in the general fund were under budget. The library's IMRF at the end of the year was just over 100% funded. So you actually had a net pension asset in the government-wide financial statements. And the OPEB liability, the other post-employment benefit plan liability, recognizing the government-wide financial statements decreased from about 460,000 to about 270,000. So that liability went down as well. So again, overall, the audit went very smoothly. We certainly appreciated all the assistance we got. And generally, a strong year for the library in terms of the financial results.
Any questions? All those good questions. So the pandemic year was a very unique year from a financial perspective.
Mm-hmm.
From your experience and seeing our financials, did it look like we were better off than many other libraries? Or were there any concerns ever raised because of the pandemic that we should be aware of?
No, I mean, I think you did a really good job of managing your expenses this year. It was evidenced by the general fund being about 700,000 under budget from the expense side of things. And that's really what you can control the most. I mean, obviously, a big piece of your revenue is property taxes, which was largely unaffected, at least this year. Other revenues were down because of the lack of traffic in the library and the like. But mostly your revenue being property taxes, you're able to manage that. And then, on the flip side, you were able to really closely, it seems like closely watch those expenses and kept them, unnecessary expenses to a minimum, or eliminated unnecessary expenses, and kept those variable expenses to a minimum to offset any loss in revenue. So yeah, I mean, overall, it was a strong year from a bottom-line perspective. And you were able to get some projects done.
In the financialism, it was a 50-page, very detailed presentation. There was some mention in there about changes in accounting standards for leases and the like. Are we in a good position to deal with some of those changes? Our future financials, are there any other issues that'll be resulting in changes and what we see in the future compared to what we saw this year?
No, I don't think it's going to have a major impact. I think you have to deal with it. What it will do is just kind of, it'll possibly put some more things on the balance sheet. And this is, again, is in the government-wide financial statements as it relates to any leases that you may have. Previously, there was a distinction between capital leases and operating leases, but operating leases just kind of just being expensed as paid now. But that distinction is going to kind of go away under the new standard. So any kind of lease will show up on your balance sheet. In the government-wide statements, it doesn't affect your fund financial statements. So there'll be some impact, some additional disclosures, so the report will be even a little longer. But I don't think, overall, it's going to have a major impact on the library.
Anything else that you think maybe we should be paying attention to in the notes in detail?
There weren't any new disclosures this year that were really required, so the notes are kind of a little bit similar to what they've done in the past. You know, I don't, I don't, there's nothing other than what I kind of talked about here. I mean, I think the pension is in a good position. I don't think, overall, it's going to have a major impact on the library. So yeah, I think, overall, like I said, a very positive year. And I think you have the controls in place and you have the people in place to. There weren't any new disclosures this year that were really required, so the notes are kind of. We didn't have to make much more adjustments. We felt good about that. You know, I don't, I don't, there's nothing other than what I kind of talked about here. I mean, I think the pension is in a good position.
We have a strong fund balance, right, to carry us into this type of a year where property taxes have been pushed from being received in August to October. I mean, that's something else that is pretty strong.
Yeah, your fund balance in the general fund was about 65% to 70% of your annual expenses. So typically, you get property taxes twice a year, so you'd like to have, ideally, six months worth of fund balance covered at that time. And right now, you're probably at about eight to nine months. Yeah, and the other funds are very strong as well, the IMRF, like debt service, those are, I mean, about that. IMRF is off in a really good position as well. So I think, overall, you're able to transfer a lot of funds out of the general fund this year to support some of the capital work that you're doing, and still, your fund balance is still in a good position. Fund balance, our fund balance, you can say, and right now, you're probably at about eight to nine months. Yeah, and the other funds are very strong as well, the IMRF, like debt service.
Any questions? Or are you ready to?
IMRF is off in a really good position as well. So yeah, I think, overall, you're able to transfer a lot of funds out of the general fund this year to support some of the capital work that you're doing, and still, your fund balance is still in a good position. Fund balance, our fund balance, you can say, and right now, you're probably at about eight to nine months.
Kate, I'm going to raise some questions. So do you have any questions? Good questions?
Ms. Bernstein? Ms. Krishnaman? Ms. Yu? Ms. Young?
Yes.
Ms. Unical?
Motion, yes. Thank you for presenting and answering questions.
Yes, thank you. I appreciate the opportunity to work with you.
Thank you.
Kate, I'm going to raise some questions. So do you have any questions? All right, the next item on the agenda is public comment. We have any public comments?
Ms. Yu? Ms. Young?
Yes.
Ms. Unical?
All right. Next item on the agenda is the case study.
So the government is over there. One milk, one Northbrook. Our community-wide reads for Vanishing Camp, that's on it, is starting in a week. We have about nine people here every single day, so we hope to be able to participate in some of them. And Krishnaman, tell us. We're getting really good registration so far, but it's, we hope we're hearing a lot of chatter in the community, people are reading and talking about, even if they're not coming to the programs, which is difficult. And then for the reopening plan, as I said in my report, we haven't really made any big changes. We just have volunteers back. The big thing that we're kind of waiting on right now is President Biden mandates that employers over 100 people vaccinated have, all employees vaccinated, what are still unclear, because even the guidelines, is whether that applies to all employers or only. So we're waiting to find out about that. But I would love to hear from the board. It turns out that there is not any, if there is, it isn't a requirement for us, I mean, of course, we're consulting the board for that. But if there's not, they have support things about imposing, and kind of carrying along with it. Some of the libraries have decided, regardless that they are going to move and do that, and I'm sure it's with the board, about having a vaccine yet. Obviously, there's religious and medical exemptions, but I would love to hear from the board go through the process. It turns out that there is not any, if there is, it is a requirement for us, of course, we're consulting the board for that. We only have the, there is no. What the board thinks about.
Is it a strict mandate or a?
Kind of carrying along with it. Some of the libraries have decided, regardless that they are going to move and do that, and I'm sure it's with the board, about having a vaccine yet. Obviously, there's religious and medical exemptions, but I would love to hear from the board go through the process. It turns out that there is not any, if there is, it is a requirement for us, of course, we're consulting the board for that. We only have the, there is no. What the board thinks about.
Is it a strict mandate or a?
Kind of carrying along with it. Some of the libraries have decided, regardless that they are going to move and do that, and I'm sure it's with the board, about having a vaccine yet. Obviously, there's religious and medical exemptions, but I would love to hear from the board go through the process. It turns out that there is not any, if there is, it is a requirement for us, of course, we're consulting the board for that. But if there's not, they have support things about imposing, and kind of carrying along with it. Some of the libraries have decided, regardless that they are going to move and do that, and I'm sure it's with the board, about having a vaccine yet. Obviously, there's religious and medical exemptions, but I would love to hear from the board go through the process. It turns out that there is not any, if there is, it is a requirement for us, of course, we're consulting the board for that. But if there's not, they have support things about imposing, and kind of carrying along with it. Some of the libraries have decided, regardless that they are going to move and do that, and I'm sure it's with the board, about having a vaccine yet. But I would love to hear from the board go through the process. It turns out that there is not any, if there is, it is a requirement for us, of course, we're consulting the board for that. But if there's not, they have support things about. It's just interesting, because this isn't like a private sector. We have people coming in as well, where obviously, we don't know their status, right? That's not any part of this at all. Right, although some libraries have started talking about carting people for programs, which I think is interesting, because there really isn't guidance out there yet on that and what that will entail. I know some of, like, didn't Malapalooza do that this year? They did, and they had nothing. They had almost like no incidents. But there's some restaurants in the city that are doing it, and some aldermen are calling for that to be going for others. I didn't know if that was something you've heard. Nothing definitive at this point that I've heard. Lots of whispers on the wind, but there's a lot of that with a lot of things, so. The medical and religious exemption falls under the kind of an ADA accommodation practice, and there's a whole procedure that you would go through in order to verify whether someone has a medical or religious exemption. And like I said, our HR attorney has laid out, they have already developed one, because a lot of people have already started mandating. So we would use that, and it would depend on whether that person was just choosing not to, whether they just didn't like it, or whether there was a real reason. If there was a real reason, then obviously, we would honor that, and medical or religious. But for the others, then it would be the testing.
Pointing that direction, because it's been quiet.
Yeah. All right, I think that's just the way this country is built.
I would say it's the way the state is going. I don't know about the country. I think the South, all their places where it's the opposite.
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
My concern is that, you know, within the greater community, we'd be consistent with what other government activities are doing.
All of the schools are now required to, so that is different. The Park District is discussing. The village, Kara is only, you know, three weeks in, so they, at this point, have not discussed it, but I imagine that that will be coming up on a future one. And we meet still every other week, so I'll certainly be continuing to talk with them.
More about the village?
Yeah, so the new village manager, Kara Pablosak, just started. And so she was not aware that there were any discussions. She's getting up to speed, obviously, on a lot of stuff, so.
Park District, did you say?
Molly said that they're starting to talk about it, but haven't, and that, obviously, if there was a mandate, they're also over 100. If there was a federal mandate, they would, of course, be following that. But whether or not they would do their own was still something that their board was discussing.
And then, in terms of neighboring villages and their libraries, where do they stand here?
It is, most of them are starting to talk about it this month. I do know that, this is a little further afield, Oak Park, Warren, Newport, and Cook Memorial have all their boards last month, earlier this month, because they already had their board meetings, did pass vaccine mandate policies. And others, I would say, probably about 50% to 60% of the other libraries, whether they were over 100, under 100 employees, were looking into it, but still not sure.
I know you brought up the concern about when we have programming coming back into the building in larger scale. I would hope they'll be able to make sure we're consistent within the village, with the Park District and neighboring libraries. My concern is, I agree, I'm pro-vaccine very much so, but I don't want to speak on a firebrand for those who are not pro-vaccine. And I want to make sure we manage it appropriately, so that we're taking into consideration that you put a legitimate reasons not to be vaccinated. And with respect to programming, that we're not posing a burden of problem.
The one thing I've heard mostly regarding programming at this point is whether some libraries might start mandating for children's in-person programs, and we're not doing any indoor and children's in-person programs yet. If any adults are coming with them, that they would need to be vaccinated, because the children are, as yet, of course, unable to be vaccinated, which I think is an interesting, it's a little harder to navigate through that with that specific restriction, but some people are looking at that. So there's a lot of options and possibilities that are being tossed around. All right, so it sounds like this is something that would be interested. I'll continue to monitor, of course, and certainly, if it is a federal mandate, I'll bring more information next month, too. Hopefully, there will be more clarity around what other people around us are doing. And there's been no deadline given for this, has there? Or? At this point. I will say that one thing that I was most concerned about was with the booster shots being unknown on whether they'd be required. How would that fit into a vaccine mandate? But now that the FDA has said that they're only requiring, they're only recommending boosters for immunocompromised and people over 65, that takes that off the table. Not that they can't change their mind, but at least for now, we don't have to then say, well, is it the vaccine and the booster? Is it just the vaccine? So that at least is helpful, that they've come down with that, which is the opposite of what everyone thought was going to happen. Thank you. And I'm happy to answer any other questions on my director's recorder on the reopening report. There's no firm plan on reopening for any kids' programming. The plan is to wait until children are eligible to be vaccinated. So that, schools are a necessity. I like to think that, I mean, reading is a necessity. They don't have to come to programs in order to read. And we feel it's really important to create an environment that's as safe as possible. So yeah, that's what we've, and dinner with any of our interactive toys and things. Like, we have, you know, there is stuff out, like, we have the big display that we woke down and things, but we don't have, like, the Lego table out or the iPads. We're trying to minimize all of that. One, obviously, we know that touching, you know, have surface contamination and infections are low, but not that existent. And of course, children do a lot of, like, touching things. Yes, exactly, exactly. Yeah, if you work in a school, you know, like, it's just all the time, stuff's coming out of orifices. So we're planning to also wait to put any of that back out as well. And we're hoping, I mean, I was hoping they had said, you know, we keep hearing, like, oh, it's really soon, it's really soon. But of course, they haven't announced anything yet, and we're very much looking forward to when they announce that, because we know that, based on the vaccine rates in this community of over 90% are fully vaccinated from 12 and up, that we're going to see a huge influx of parents going. And that, pretty much, what we've been hearing is, you know, pediatricians are saying, like, yes, you should definitely do it, because there was some worry that there might be some hesitancy, but it doesn't seem like that will be the case here, based on what I've been hearing and talking to people in the town.
Any questions before we move on? Okay, the next item.
I just wanted to point out, I can't hear Maura when you're talking.
Okay, I'll speak up. Thank you.
Next item is board member reports. Are there any board members who would like to address the floor? Seeing none, hearing none, we move on. Okay, so unfinished business. The first item is the climate action plan. And Kate, you can present on that.
So obviously, we've been talking about the climate action plan for several months now. This month, I included in the packet what our plan is, which is to launch a committee that will be two-pronged, and Kelly will be one of the co-chairs of it on the operational side, so that's looking internally at what we're going to do within our own operations, both within existing energy practices as well as for future building projects. And then Jill Franklin, who you recall was part of the village's climate action group that worked with the consultant to develop the plan, will be working on the programming and marketing side of things, was obviously a member of our marketing team. And they will be focusing on the outreach to patrons, to educate them about the plan, doing programs like the ones that's going on right now, which is probably why we don't have a lot of people here, because they're talking about sustainable landscaping. And everyone's probably watching that, not that you guys aren't just as riveting, but doing more programs along that nature, and then also just helping the village with their efforts. And then there is also the sustainability commission that the village is launching. So Kelly and Jill will be representing on the staff side. The village board president seems very eager to have participation from the various governing entities. I know typically, staff are the ones who participate, but we do have Jay participating, of course, for many years on the EDC committee, and I wanted to see if there was any interest from the board on being part of that village group. And I'm happy to answer any questions about our internal plan. We know that this is a 30-year plan, so we're not planning to, like, jump in and start racing ahead. We want to be really thoughtful and get everyone up to speed on what the plan entails and doing internal assessments and kind of ramping up slowly.
Is anyone interested in participating with the village committee?
I would be very interested in it, but I think at the moment, I'm stretched a little thin, and I would take a rain check until next summer, and then I would die in time.
That sounds great, Maura. I'll make a note that we can follow up in a year, and then, yeah.
Just so, Maura would have an idea, is there any kind of indication of how often that committee meets?
Once a month, they're planning to meet. I don't know if that's going to be for forever, but for now, that is what the plan is. I think as they're launching and getting people up to speed on it. I imagine that it will settle down into either like a bimonthly or quarterly, once there end up, there'll be subgroups that are doing more action-oriented things, so it's not the whole committee every month, or whole commission.
Were there any other questions for Kate? Okay, is there a motion to adopt the village of Northbrook Climate Action Plan as presented? Or a motion?
Second.
Okay, we'll do a voice vote. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Say nay. Any absentee, abstentions? Okay, looks like it passes. All right, next item, I'll get out of the way. Kate can present on the fiction and media construction project.
Take a second, it's coming. It just needs to, the projector is confused, because it hasn't been used in a really long time, and so we've been testing it, but it's like, oh, you want me to wake up again? So, thank you. I realize I have the wrong one up. Okay, that's what we're talking about now. So I wanted to just kind of go through what I had, what I had put in the board packet. And this was a departure from what we had originally planned, and I am asking the board to reconsider the project that we're working on and also some of the future projects. And so I just wanted to kind of go through, because it's maybe perhaps a little confusing. So this is the plan as it exists currently. So we have another six years of project, so this is where we are in 2021, '22. But we would like to switch and move some of the projects together, so you have 1A and 1B.
and 1B, 2A and 2B, and then 3 and 4 would remain separate. And so as it stands right now, from a financial standpoint, you can see that we have it all nicely spaced out, divided up, and that in two years, we would be looking for another bond for about 2.7 million, and finishing up with the master plan in fiscal year '29. Here is what the projects look like. So, project one, the green space is what we were working on right now, and the red space was, is obviously the entire floor. So what I'm suggesting is that we actually combine and do all of this as one project, and then following that, shift youth services, which was next, the green box here was the next project after the fiction media staff space, but instead, combine and do all of the yellow, which was going to be split between the green and all of the yellow into two years, and do that in one year. And then projects 3 and 4 were still going to be the same, we would just move them up a little bit. And so then what that looks like is that we would have no project this year, and then next year, we would do all of the third floor, and this amount is just the two years combined, there's no change in the amount. Ditto with '23, '24, that's just the combined two years into one. And then that would mean that the reference project would move up a year, and also the, well, we'd actually move up two years, because we're combining two of the projects, and then move up the last piece, the inner core. And then what that looks like in terms of our facility plan budget is that we would be able to wait longer in order to get the bond, and that we could get the bond for significantly less, we'd be looking at 1.3. We aren't carrying as large of a balance in CIF at the end of that, but Anna looked, Anna and I looked over the facility plan, and based on the projects coming after that, we feel that what they, what BTC had originally recommended isn't necessarily needed, especially given how much we've been able to transfer each year into CIF, so that we would be in a good shape with half a million dollars to, for any unforeseen projects, as well as the planned projects that we have. And so, right now, construction costs are still high, not only on the supply front, and there's still a lot of supply chain delays. We were talking to Pepper, and they were talking about one of their big projects in Nutria, is that it's way behind because they just can't get the supplies. And I know we weren't talking about doing the project till next spring, but they don't know when these will change, but the labor costs are also still higher than they were when we did the first floor project, when we did the lobby, because everyone that had cost projects last year is now doing them. And so we're, and they're expecting that trend to continue for a little while. So we feel that we would also be able to get better pricing if we waited a little bit, and be able to look at this more holistically. So that is the overview. Questions? Yeah, Maura? Or Barbara, either one?
I like the idea of doing sort of larger areas. I think it's more cost-effective, and it helps you sort of just answer more questions more effectively. What does this maybe, I don't know, seem to be sort of stepping into your territory, but what do you do about the services that are, because you can't, like, relocate and sort of condense, sort of say, oh, we're doing youth services, so, like, young, early childhood is going to move over there, like, how do you understand?
Yeah, so that's a great question. And we have not looked at that in detail yet, because we weren't sure, you know, how the board would feel. Some things that other libraries have done when they're doing whole building projects is move off-site, much like we did in 1999, moving to what is now Sunset Foods, where we added half of the second and the third floor. I don't think we would need to do that, but it might mean, you know, shifting staff, and obviously having closed staffs, having limited access to the collections for a certain amount of time. Skokie did this recently, where they kind of did it in phases. So it's like, okay, they're working on this half of the construction, so we can still get to these collections for, you know, these two months, and then those collections aren't available to this other half, so it wouldn't be the whole of Fiction and Media, that wouldn't be available, but we'd be able to segment it. And then also move some of the more popular things, like our book club collection, our new books, move those down to the second floor, to the lobby temporarily, in order to make sure that people had access to those. It's helpful that we now have the Popular Materials Collection in the lobby as well, because that has been getting really heavy use, and that, I think, is something that we're going to continue to see increase as well. And then potentially, you know, might, we need to get some type of trailer. Yes, maybe, maybe we would need to block off the interactive classroom to put staff in here. There's a lot of different things that I think we can consider. Obviously, looking to try and minimize, get the construction done as quickly as possible, but minimize the impact on patrons as much as possible as well, and still provide them access. We're also in a great consortium, so Indian Trails, when they did their huge renovation, they went from, whatever their building is, it's about the same size as us, right?
Yeah.
I think they're about, to a 13,000 square foot space, so like, from like 90,000 to 13,000. And they told all of the neighboring libraries, like, hey, you might see more of our patrons coming to you, and we said, great. And so we would do the same. We'd go to, you know, Glenview and Indian Trails and Deerfield and Glencoe and say, hey, you might see an increase, plus we would encourage people also to place more holds, because we can get items generally in one to two days as well.
Just on that note, I noticed in the data for this month, it looked like online holds were down.
More people.
And then checkouts were up, which means that people are actually coming in and picking up their books again, is that right?
Yeah.
Okay. Because I love the old thing.
We're not, it's not going away.
Okay. Just, yeah. Love it.
Yeah, okay. We recognize that there's lots of to- but, hey, so.
Yeah, I mean, people can use, well, people know that's not going to happen.
Yeah. Barbara, you had a question, too, I think.
Given all the disruption and, I don't know, the uneasiness that we're still living through, what is the advantage of doing such a huge project, which will be extremely disruptive in another year?
Well, I think that one of the things is that we don't know exactly how all the pieces of this pandemic are going to play out long-term in terms of behavior. And so waiting longer will ensure that we can look at how people are changing and using things, like, you know, as Abby pointed out, if you'd asked me two months ago, I would have said, oh, no, you know, her-side pickup is going to remain super high. Well, it is starting to go down, but I don't think it's going to go down to where it was, because now so many more people are aware, much like ebooks. Yes, we've seen it decrease from where it was at this time last year, but it's still much higher than where it was two years ago. And so this will give us more of a chance to investigate that. I also think that it's important for libraries to continue to evolve, and we could certainly wait on all of these and wait two more years. I hate doing that to the staff, because they currently don't have adequate space, as you guys saw on our tour. Waiting the year, I think, is reasonable, waiting like another three or four or five. This also, for youth services, will give us a chance. I feel that that area, I don't think that for Fiction and Media with the adult stuff, we're going to see as big of changes as we will in our youth area, and I think moving that a little bit further out is going to be even better, because I don't know, Maura, if you're seeing it in schools, but like, we don't, we don't know, there's so many changes and how that's going to play out. Giving us even more space to realize what that looks like is going to just ensure that we're not making poor design decisions that we have to change a couple of years later. I don't think that that's going to be the case with Fiction and Media, because of the nature of what is in that floor. It's largely collections, some seating, it isn't really an interactive space. I don't know, did that get at what you were?
All I was thinking was certainly to do something, are we better off doing what you had originally proposed, which is a smaller chunk? But, I mean, it makes more sense, as long as you're doing it to do it all.
Yes.
But it was just a sense of disruption, but I guess it would be even longer if we did chunks.
It would be, well, and it would be more drawn out, right? Because it would be, oh, this a little bit, and then a little bit, and, you know, being able to do the whole floor at once, I think the disruption for that is going to be minimal, because patrons aren't going to be going up there. Even if we have access to the collections, we wouldn't have patrons going up into a kind of construction, so we'd have staff running up, getting stuff, bringing it down. And so that would also mean that it wasn't like half-cut-off, where we have construction on one side of a wall, and I think it would actually minimize it quite a bit, hopefully.
Will this allow you to start earlier then to get, because I'm well aware of the supply chain issues?
Yeah.
So will this allow you then to, like, get ahead of that, because you're not doing anything this year, or can you put in the orders earlier or anything?
Well.
How can you mitigate that?
So we can't put in any orders, so we still have to do the design phase for the rest of the floor. We've only done the design phase for the staff area, so that will take, you know, typically that takes about four months, and we would of course be bringing that to the board to look at, which is what we were going to do this month, but we're not, because we're asking you to do this. And so, and then in order to put anything on order, we have to go through the formal bid process, and it's generally not a good idea to do that, like, six months in advance of the project. I do think that Pepper is really good about, as soon as that bid is approved, as soon as a recommendation is presented and the board approves it, moving very quickly to get those supply orders in, because we do know, they do, are very aware of the supply chain issues. My hope is that, so if we're doing this in spring of 2023, that by then, the supply chain issues might not be gone, but hopefully they'll be mitigated, and hopefully there will be other things that have popped up to allow that to be navigated, or that Pepper comes and says, hey, we need to approach this from a different timeline perspective, and we would adjust as needed.
Right, and then we don't know, but it can really throw things off.
Oh, yeah, it's, it's crazy this year. It's, I mean, and we're seeing it even with, like, the books that we're ordering, just so many delays, yeah.
Can I say one thing?
Yeah.
When we were going through the project for the third floor, we were focusing on the staff space, and one of the things that we needed to do was figure out how to move the existing shelving to give us the space to create this new staff space. And what we were finding was that there was going to be a cost involved in moving this shelving, and, and then, which wasn't going to be very beneficial.
Right, and then three years later, we were going to have to do it all.
We would have to move it all again. So this decision that Kate's bringing to you, or this thing that we kind of found out, was it probably makes sense to look at the floor as a whole, rather than in two separate pieces, because it, it might even reduce the cost of the project, because you're going to have people, it, it might, like, don't hold me to that, but it's, we're going to have a better picture of the whole floor. I mean, another thing is, you know, we're trying to fit that staff space in that corner, and now as we look at the whole floor, that staff space might change a little bit as to where it's going to go, and it might go in a better location because we've looked at the whole floor. Like, does, does that make sense?
Perfect.
So to your, you were asking, Barbara, why not continue with the plan? It's because we're thinking that the time and the money that we would be spending to do this little piece isn't worth that when we can look at the whole floor. And I think the same applies to youth services.
Yeah.
You know, to look at that whole area altogether, we might be able to use the space better.
And we're like halfway through the master plan now, and so five years ago, when we were first looking at the master plan, it made sense to chunk the projects into smaller pieces, because we thought, oh, that'll be a little bit easier, less disruption for the patrons. Now, as we're getting into some of these, we realize, like, oh, no, we were incorrect in thinking that that would be the best way to go, and we didn't really realize, like Anna said, until we started looking at moving all the shelving, and then it was like, oh, gosh, this isn't, this isn't great. So.
I have another question. Form of a comment. When the, one of the concerns I have is that when things, we are finally able to open up more and there's more programming that's available, if then we go ahead and say, oh, now we're shutting down services for renovation, I don't want the library to get into a situation like the Park District was in, where they're like, oh, you're not going to have the pool open this year because we're re- the.
Right, yeah.
The ice rinks. So I think we have to be careful of that. The fact that it's further out is good, but, just to make sure that, you know, it's not sort of like, oh, yeah, it's open for a week and then we're shutting it down, you know, that sort of thing.
And we obviously thought that this was several years away, so we hadn't even really started talking about it much, but I would think that we would take Pollock and turn it into, at least for the time being, a mini children's room where people can, you know, and yes, that would reduce programming in other areas. Are there things, like, could we put something out where we could have different areas? Like, we haven't explored all of the options, but I think that there are options to minimize it, and, and it might make sense to even do this during the summer, which might be counterintuitive, because that is our busiest time with summer reading, but we could do most of the programming outside, and so that wouldn't be as much of a disruption and still have, like, mostly collections in, say, Pollock. So as an option. Again, we haven't gotten into this or discussed various options as of yet, but I do think that we're very fortunate in that we have really great relationships with District 28 and the village, and I think that we can also look at them and say, hey, is there anything that we can do to partner? And I think that they would be willing to, not I think, they would be willing to work with us if we had an ask for them to help mitigate this. And I have no idea how long this construction project would be. You know, we're not talking about, like, this is, this is all open area, so they're not taking down, the only walls is the quiet study right up here, so there's that one wall there, but the rest is really, you know, upgrading shelving and shifting where things are, and then there is one wall that we're putting in right here. And so, again, I don't have all, I don't have many answers right now, but I think we could also ask the architects now, like, hey, how long would a project, or ask Pepper, how long would a project like this typically take, given the nature of the space? Because we did, the study rooms took about five weeks, and that was basically just putting stuff up. Now, obviously, this is a much larger space than right here, but I do think that there is, and we can also, again, chunk things, so that there are phases within the project to minimize some of that. But I agree, that is definitely something that we are very fortunate in the popularity that our children's department enjoys in the community, and we know that if we just completely took that away for a time, people would be very upset, rightfully so, there's a lot of great stuff there. And so we would definitely work to minimize that as much as possible.
So project four, I mean, is here, we're, that's on the second floor.
This is the core.
Which we're moving now.
So that's here, the reference office, admin, the youth services, it's all of the staff space, it's the last piece, it's all of the staff spaces, because for this, we're not touching staff spaces, we're only looking at the patron area, ditto for the reference. So like, the gray area is the collaboratory, and then right here, you have the study rooms, computer rooms, the reference office. Here, we're like, right here, and then more study rooms, and then admin, and then youth services is on this other side. So it's reconfiguring it, you can't really see this now, because I wasn't really, but this would be a, this is the staff space. Here's a, another patron-facing conference room, a little bit larger than the one at the end of the study rooms, is what we have planned originally. There's a computer, similar to this, like a computer classroom that we can use, that people can rent out, and then reference staff, admin staff, youth services staff, marketing and admin. I'm remembering where everything is properly, everything is blurry, so.
What I really love, as you look at the bigger areas, is it gives you potential to dream. It gives you potential
It gives you potential to look at possibilities and things that you might not have thought of or would be confined to a small space. So I, you've answered my questions and I think that it's a great opportunity.
Barbara? Any other questions?
Um, can you explain one more time how we reduced for the bond by half?
Yeah. I, I'm going to actually let, okay, so Anna's going to explain it better than I can.
Part of it has to do, Jamie, with the money that I put in in fiscal year 20 and fiscal year 21, the excess funds. Not that I put in, but the, the money that was transferred from operating that wasn't in the original, um, plan that you approved. So we were only supposed to put in 425,000. We put in over a million. So that took like $700,000 out of that 2.7. So now, you know, you're already down to two. And the same thing happened in fiscal year 20.
Got it. And so the other piece here is that each year, I just caught, I just cut little pieces, but each year we're like, this number combined with the other costs, which I deleted, we also are adjusting for inflation. So by condensing, we're not going out as far, so the inflation, five years from now is going to be less than three years.
And Kate pointed out, like, the number in fiscal year 28, 29 says 1.7 at the bottom.
Yeah.
And we only have 400 or like a half a million dollars in the new plan. So that's another 1.2, Jamie.
Yeah. So it, yeah, so we have the 1.2 because we don't really need to have this high of a.
No, I don't.
We don't want to, we want to be using the taxpayers' dollars responsibly, of course. And so we need to have enough to maintain the building. That's very important, given how old their building is. But Anna and I both feel based on the projects that would be coming after that, that that is, and what we anticipate, we anticipate being able to put a little bit more in each year, not like a million again, but a little bit more. So that would be even higher as well in that we would still be able to maintain the building without having to have those fed additional funding.
So maintenance costs go down because are they doing things? Is that what you're saying, Barbara, or no?
No. Um, it's mostly, I would say, the extra money we've put in and the inflation.
And actually, this plan has the actual costs of the projects in there, not, this document has the actual costs of the projects in there, not the estimates.
Up till.
When we put the 2.7.
Right. So what you're saying is that this view we're looking at is what was presented the last time.
Yeah.
So if we were to refresh this to the reality today, that would not be 2.7.
Correct.
Okay. I got you.
It would be the 1.3.
Right, right. So that's, that's not going to be as, yeah.
Right.
Yeah, okay, I get it.
All right, Jay, I think you also.
Well, I was just going to ask in terms of, you know, the laying a gear, is the Cedar Lane project on schedule so that it'll be taking places coming here?
That's a lovely, lovely question. And we are in the midst of some further discussions. The Village Board had some more questions, so it's kind of in a, in a continued discovery state right now. So we do not have a timeline or additional information at this time.
The community had lots of comments, Jay.
And so the Village Board asked for more information, so the Village staff are doing more work. And so we don't yet know. Originally, we were supposed to be doing the second, well, we're going out to bid in February, but it looks like that's going to be delayed. We don't know by how much or if they're going to redo it or what is happening. So we're waiting to hear from them probably next month.
So it's not clear that by the lane, we would be able to avoid that in our construction going on in Cedar Lane that is under construction.
Correct. Because we don't have any, we don't have a timeline for that anymore.
But when we're talking about our construction, it's just small cars. You know what I mean? Like, they're not bringing in the.
Yeah, but my, my point being, when you look at the Cedar Lane construction plan, weren't they going to be putting Cedar Lane in one direction? So that even if we're not bringing in heavy equipment, you're still going to have a disruption that impacts the whole library, including the construction group, and you're losing street park.
During that time. And it will be a long project, you know, because we were planning for it to be March to October, so it was going to be over a half a year. So, which we knew was going to be challenging, but I mean, if the work is going to be done, it'll have to be done. But their plan, they wouldn't, we might have a little bit of overlap, but I don't think that we would. But then I think that that speaks to some of Maura's talk, I know it was for you services, of like, then would that extend the disruption? And we just don't know at this point. But by, either way, we were going to be doing some construction then. So this actually, I think the third floor would potentially be less disruptive because it's out of patron site. We would have stuff brought down. So hopefully it wouldn't have as much of an impact. And we can also look at, once we have a more definitive answer on Cedar Lane, adjusting that timing to minimize the patron disruption as much as possible.
It was, it was my hope that you would say yes or on track.
Yeah.
Allow us to avoid some of that.
Yes, I'm glad. Other, any other questions?
Well, my question for the board is, you know, we're not looking for a vote, but is there any objection to the concept of deferring some of this work, allowing the changes to the plan, as Kate kind of presented it?
Yeah, I agree that the new plan seems to be the most beneficial in all areas.
I agree. I agree. And you're laying it and then come on. I agree.
All right, so I think you got the support of the board to move with the changes.
Okay, great. Thank you. And I'm going to just check in with the attorney. I don't know whether, since the board did formally approve this, if we need to make any changes. There wasn't really a timeline on it, so we might be able to just add an addendum later on. I might have something for you next month, so we'll see.
Hey, the next item on the agenda is the Illinois Libraries Presents Intergovernmental Agreement. Kate, I think you had the invoiced agreement.
I sent, yes. And the, the only change was really, um, originally, the attorney had had that Rails was going to be providing the original funding. They're, they're not providing it. We can't yet put, as I put in my memo, the State Library has said that they will give us a grant of 37,000. It isn't formally approved yet, so we couldn't put it in the governmental agreement. But we did want it to be clear that neither Northbrook Library nor Rails was going to be fronting any money other than our participation cost, which we would be doing regardless. So that was the change, which is in section three, paragraph A. That was the only change from what was originally in your board packet. But I'm also happy to answer any questions on the IGA in total.
Can we take just a quick second and explain how it is going to function? Cause you and I talked a little bit about that.
Sure.
So my understanding is that the way the agreement will work is as other libraries come into the group, they will sign on to the agreement. But the question I have for you is, are they signing on as an additional party to one agreement or does each additional library have a separate agreement?
So it is one agreement that each party will sign on to.
Okay, that's why I thought it made sense. So effectively, you know, if we approve this agreement, we'll sign it and then as libraries come on, they'll sign as a counterparty agreeing to contribute their portion and be able to participate into the programming. So questions for Kate? Are you ready?
Why you said it on, so you said that Rails, but I saw somewhere, oh.
So Rails is also a party to the intergovernmental agreement, along with any of the other libraries that will be participating, because Rails will be doing the invoicing for us of each member library, as well as putting the checks for us for the performers.
And is Rails going to be soliciting other libraries or how's that going to happen?
The steering committee that we put together will be doing that. We have some informational sessions. We've been sending information out to them. We've already had a lot of interest, so we have an informational session next week that we'll be kind of going through and asking people to kind of say, yes, I am interested. And then we'll send them the IGA and then they'll have until December 31st to formally get it approved. And then Rails will do the billing in January of 2022 with the first presenter being in January. And that's why the grant is coming into play because we need that in order to put a down payment. Most of these large performers require a down payment. They're not willing to wait until after the program, like our normal presenters, to get their money. So, so that's for that. And of course, the Zoom license, which we need to pay for in order to host things. But then that'll be reimbursed. So the grant is doing it, but then the hope is, the plan is that once we have everyone on board, we'll, much like we do here, we'll have about a six-month fund balance, so we won't be cash, you know, we won't have a cash flow issue because that, we know we have enough money to pay for everything based on the interest shown, but it's just a matter of when that money is coming in and making sure that we have a sufficient fund balance to maintain operations.
There's a sample contract that was going to have to clear with the.
Yes.
IGA. Now, is that something that we're approving as well or are we just seeing that so you know?
That's just an exhibit. So that's the sample that we would use with performers if they do not have one. A lot of the publishers have their own. And that is why we also have, as part of the budget, is that we would have money set aside, of course, for the attorney to review any contracts that weren't able, that we weren't able to do with ours. The sample contract is the one we use here, so with a few, with taking stuff out about in-person stuff. Say yeah.
Any more questions?
Sorry, a quick question. So Rails does the billing, other than budget, but the, like, the main people that's doing these are the committee members of.
Yeah, so we're going to have, we have the steering committee, which will be responsible for the finance and governance. We're going to have a marketing committee that we're just forming right now, which will be responsible for not member communication, but more producing publicity for the events for member libraries to use. We have an events production committee that's going to be chaired by Ariel, who you may recall, but helping us with the board meetings. And, and then we also have a programming, programming committee meeting, which they're, programming committee, which they are responsible for soliciting ideas, booking performers, figuring out, you know, who to have and when. And then we'll also have a data analytics committee because we really want to make sure, one of the things that is often lacking in libraries is the ability to evaluate both quantitatively and qualitatively, the effectiveness and impact of the programs we offer. And we feel that with a statewide program like this, we really want to be able to evaluate the efficacy and the impact on local communities and also highlight issues. Like, we do anticipate there being issues with some of the rural libraries who don't have good broadband service or any broadband service, being able to make use of this. And then we can highlight that for the State Library to look at other broadband grants for those communities by having that data available. So that is all of the committees. And, and the committees will be made up of staff from member libraries. And we're very focused on having that be made up of staff at all levels, as well as all skill levels, because we think it's really important and a great opportunity to do some training and mentoring. A lot of people might not have an opportunity to do a large program. So being at the event production and getting to see all the steps will help make the staff at all of the libraries around the state stronger. And so we're excited about that opportunity as well. That was the more information that you asked, but sorry.
Okay, is there a motion to approve the Illinois Libraries Presenting the Government Agreement as presented?
I'm, I'm sure that as presented.
And Sharon has seconded it. So by voice vote, all in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, please say nay. The abstentions, the casters.
Thank you all very much. I'm very excited about this.
All right, new business. Kate and Anna will toss it off the levy.
We're going to come up and do this again. And it just needs a minute to just, you know, find its stride. But Anna doesn't want to be over here. She's like, I want to just be as far out of the side as I can. Okay, so Anna and I wanted to just do an overview of the levy and also just give you some additional things kind of outside of the library that we think it's helpful to think about that are impacting potential, potential future impacts on the levy and budget. So Anna, can I go first?
So in the packet, we are presenting five options. We are recommending a 2.5% levy increase. When I put together the options, I looked at prior year revenue and expense data. I looked at spending forecast from our technology plan and our facility plans to try to determine what we thought the spending was going to be. And based upon that data, we're recommending 2.5%. The minimum amount that I think that we need to continue with our current level of services is 1.7% levy increase. If we keep the total operating levy flat, the operating, the general fund levy will go down, and so we'll spend less money and we're going to have to reduce services and benefits and maybe not be able to hire everybody that we feel we need to run the library efficiently and effectively. If we keep the operating levy flat, because we know costs are going to increase for insurance and other expenses, we will also have to maybe cut some services and benefits. So that's kind of, those were the options that we put together and the rationale as to why we think we need 2.5%. So.
Yeah, Anna already talked about this a little bit, but, you know, it isn't just looking at one piece of data, but it's looking at a lot of different pieces of data. And she, as she mentioned, the estimated increases in lines like insurance that we have less control over, obviously, come into play. And then we also have upcoming projects that we know, we know are going to be happening, like the Climate Action Plan, our EDI initiatives. And I know that we were pausing strategic planning, but, you know, by the time we're working on the budget for next year, I anticipate us wanting to look at that, whether or not we do a formal strategic planning process or anything, there, and also action items with that. There will be costs associated with those, which are at this point unknown, but just something to be aware of.
And, okay, go ahead.
Yeah, no, go ahead. No, 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 go ahead, go ahead. And so then, thinking about forces kind of outside of this, we also have to factor in what's happening, of course, in the world around us. There are, you know, the social security increase, and I'll share this PowerPoint, which I've linked to articles if you're interested. They're anticipating a 6% increase for social security next year. That is often used as a benchmark for many salary adjustments and different factors with personnel costs. The Consumer Price Index for the Chicago Naperville area is also looking at an increase of almost 5%. Those numbers are typically not, for the CPI, it's usually the end of the year. For social security, it's typically the end of October where they finalize that for the next year. Chicago's minimum wage is now at $15, which is something else to think about as well because we obviously are pulling, we're within that scope of service. We have had issues like we did with our shelter positions. We had it, we had to increase it just a little bit to 1222 an hour, where it was at the $11, which is the current minimum wage for that. We're seeing a lot of restaurants and other industries that are having to increase their cost, their personnel wages significantly in order to get people in. That's always been a bit of an issue in this geographic area anyway, but it is becoming even more so if any of you have been to a restaurant. Pretty much, I feel like every single one has a sign up saying, like, we're stressed out. And then, of course, we also have a salary benchmarking project that we're going to be working on next year. We don't know, this is another unknown. We don't know what the cost will be, but we do anticipate that there have been some market changes in some of the positions and that we will see changes. and that we will see changes within those. I think it's also helpful to look at how we compare to other libraries. So state standards for libraries say that we should spend about no more than 60% of our budget on salaries. As you can see, we're at 52%, so we're in really good shape there. It says when you add salary and benefits, and they're talking, of course, about insurance, not necessarily, insurance, I R F, so pensions as well as that, not really the soft benefits like vacation, should be under, no more than 70% of your total budget. And you can see that we're also under. You can see that we're in line with a lot of where the other libraries are. Some are significantly higher than we are. And I always like to put Oak Park and Skokie in because even though they're not adjacent to us, I do feel that they are, they're similarly sized and situated in terms of their budget. So it's always helpful to benchmark against that, even though they're not in the exact geographic area that we are. And so Anna's going to talk a little bit about how the budget plays in and where our forecast was and why it was so much less, which is also something that we usually use the forecast to determine what we need for next year. But this year was a little bit different because of the pandemic.
So when I put the levy numbers together, I looked at the list of active employees that we have in our open positions. I estimated a rate increase of 2.5%, hoping that that was going to be enough for COLA and the outcome of the benchmarking analysis that we plan to do in fiscal year '23. I also want to note, just because somebody left the library and created an open position doesn't mean that we were 100% filling that. I mean, we didn't, we wanted to kind of see workflow changes and just, you know, what happened as a result of COVID and how that was going to change things.
And also with RFID and the AMH.
So just because somebody left doesn't mean that those hours were filled, you know, one for one. We did take that into account when we looked at this. So when you look at this number to this number, it went down because we had a reduction in the workforce and we didn't fill positions. And then when you look from here to here, we had an additional reduction of workforce from what actually, you know, where we were in fiscal year '21 to where we are now. So really, you want to kind of look from here to here. And this has got two years of salary increases in there. And the Cook County Minimum Wage Increase is playing a part in that. So, you know, you really need to look from here to here. And while it looks really big, it's not. It, you know, it's not, you can't just say, oh, it was this percent increase, which is about 5.8, because we increased in fiscal year '21 wages, we increased in fiscal year '22, we increased again in fiscal year '23. So in theory, this has only got a 2.5% rate increase included in it to get you to like, it was 52% paid on that last spreadsheet of our total expenses.
Sorry, we just said this, so the decrease between '21 and '22, though.
We had, people still left, Maureen.
And we had additional people leave that we haven't still.
And I even put in this number, like, hoping that we were going to have people hired in November. But, you know, I put like six months of the open positions in that number.
And last fiscal year, we hired two people, a shelter and a clerk. Were the only two that we hired last fiscal year because we needed the, but we also continued to have people that were leaving and retiring and, yeah. So.
Maybe I'm remembering incorrectly, but I feel like, hasn't the levy always been around 3%? This is lower than when we had the past, right?
Yeah, I mean, we try to keep it between 2 and 3%, but I mean, we're also trying to be thoughtful with where we are right now.
Yeah, so.
No, I know, I'm saying, it's good, but I think we've, I think we've always been around 3, right?
Last year, the board decided to keep the levy, the operating levy flat. We did allow an increase for debt service because that went up. So we, so we had a 0% increase in our operating levy. And then the year before, I don't have it in front of me, I want to say it was like 26.
Negative 0.4.
Negative 0.4, we went down.
Yeah.
We reduced it, that's right. So it has been a few years since we've done the.
About 3%.
Yeah, and that is in the packet where it shows, I'm sorry to put it in here. It shows the list where you can see historically what that looks like. Okay, I can. Pull it up on here. Oh, no, I'm not pulling it up where you can see it, give me just one second. So yeah, so here you can see that, yes, then the year before was 3, 4.2%. Well, you guys can read the numbers, but four to 10.
2.5 is higher than we've done in the past couple of years, but historically lower than we would have done.
And this was, if I'm not mistaken, the year that we did the, that you guys did the bond. This was before I came for the auditorium and meeting room project.
You can see there was.
Right.
A big jump there for the bond.
Yeah.
Right, so I mean, we've, I mean, it kind of falls in line, 2.5. We're not asking for anything out of the ordinary, but.
Yeah. I have a few more pieces that I want to share too. Because obviously, personnel accounts for 60% of our budget, so that is the biggest factor in this. But there are certainly other considerations. Materials and programs are really important. Materials, according to state standards, should account for at least, in order to be considered an established, well-maintained collection, at least 12%. We typically are at about 13%. Last year, we did keep that line flat. And we know that programming is going to be impacted. And so programming is likely to remain virtual and hybrid, meaning virtual and in-person and also just in-person. So there are associated costs with that that we don't yet know exactly what those will be because we obviously, we have to continue the Zoom licenses. If there's other equipment we need, you know, like we got the Owl. I mean, the Owl was $200, I think, $100.
No, it was like $900.
$900, wow, I'm like, I'm sorry, guys. I clearly don't remember things correctly. I think I might be thinking of one of the cameras. There's other costs associated though with that that we don't yet know. We also know that downloadables, while I said earlier are lower than they were this time last year, they're still higher than they were. eBook pricing is wacky. So for instance, a fiction hardcover John Grisham book typically retails for around $25 to $27. We get a 42.5% discount. The ebook typically retails for libraries at about $90. So buying additional copies is significantly more expensive. So we know that we're probably going to have to, we've allocated more money the last two years and will probably continue to have to do that.
The flying canopy too.
Yes.
People are using that.
Which is good.
Great. We know a lot, but that also we're having to put more money into the flying canopy.
Paper costs are also on the rise. So I urge all of you to shop local and stop buying online because one of the reasons it's on the rise is that many of the manufacturing facilities that manufacture paper have switched to manufacturing cardboard for boxes for online shipping. And so they're seeing their prices go up because there's fewer avenues. And then in turn, publishers are seeing their prices go up. And then in turn, they're turning that around to the consumer and seeing those prices go up. So we don't know what the long-term impacts are. We're also experiencing some pretty significant supply chain disruptions right now with getting some of the materials in. And publishers are estimating longer wait times and adjusting publication dates. So we know that that will also continue to play a role. And then we do have our new popular materials collection that, as I said, has proven to be very popular. And we anticipate, of course, continuing to grow that collection. Depending on as we see usage increase, we may need to allocate additional funding there as well. And then we also need to think about the budget in technology, building in technology. We do know that we have a healthy capital improvement fund, which is fantastic. But we also have to recognize that our building is over 50 years old and much like all of us, only continues to get older. And we have to recognize that with an aging building, there's going to be ongoing costs. We are very good at anticipating and doing preventative maintenance. A lot of that comes from the operating budget. So the large building projects come from the capital fund. But those ongoing maintenance, you know, maintaining our HVAC system, you know, our boilers and, you know, the lighting and everything else that makes up the physical building from furniture to walls, et cetera. We try to keep those in good working order so that we don't have unexpected emergencies. And that means maintaining them and spending that money, doing, you know, it's like cleaning out your dryer vent. You got to do that so you don't bring the house down. We also know, though, that in an aging building, there's stuff behind the walls that we might not be able to anticipate and there are unknown issues. We want to make sure that we can address those. As I mentioned, in terms of technology, there's certainly programming costs potentially associated with that. We also don't know long-term, we're still determining what a work from home option looks like. One of the things that I think is really important and that we need to consider is the technology piece of that. If people are going to be working from home, we need to be able to supply them with the tools needed to do that work successfully. And that means having the technology. Right now, we were lucky that last year, when all of this was happening, it was time for us to replace all of our interactive classroom training laptops that we use. And so we kept all of those. And all of those then went to staff and we were able, because we knew we weren't going to be doing in-person programming, the new ones, we were also able to deploy. Well, eventually, we're going to be back to in-person technology programs. And those laptops that we gave people last year are going to phase out and no longer be effective. Do we replace all of those? What does that look like? How do we maintain those technology costs over time? So there's a lot of different factors to consider, both within our own organization as well as factors impacting the world outside that Anna and I wanted to make sure the board was aware of as you consider what we want to do with the levy. So with that, and I can turn this off so that you can turn the lights on to make it a little bit easier. Would you?
Do you need the screen anymore? Do you want to put it up? All right, so who do you want to go up first, Anna or Kate?
What?
I said, who do you want to go up first, Anna or Kate? Questions? So does anybody have any comments on the levy that they'd like to see any changes in? Any line items that they're concerned about how the proposal's been, that they want to see more options for?
I mean, it's a singular line, 2.5. A little high based on age, family level. But I know that, you know, that minimum wage, insurance, there's a lot of unknowns.
I think we're starting to see prices going up dramatically. I think that's the biggest issue. Whether it's because of minimum wage going up or whether it's because of supply shortages or whether it's because of the economy changing dramatically now or post-COVID or near post-COVID from the economic standpoint. Yeah, I'll start with you and if you have any just comments on the budget, presumptively.
No, I mean, I think we've decided it's lower than go back a couple of years pre all of this stuff. It's still lower than that, but given your point, I think it's increasing. I think it seems reasonable.
Okay.
I appreciated the presentation and thoroughness of it because there were factors that, as a new board member, I wouldn't necessarily have considered. And I'd take your recommendation and would go with that immediately.
Maureen?
It was reasonable based on where we've been in the past and based on what's been helpful.
Jamie?
Yeah, it makes sense to me.
So it looks like Anna for next month for the levy approval, at the 2.5%.
Okay, perfect.
All right. The next item is to go into closed session to discuss the process for appointing a new board member. So I believe I need a motion to go into closed session pursuant to the Illinois Statute 5120/2C3, the selection of a person to fill a public office as defined in the Act, including a vacancy in a public office where the public body is given power to appoint under lawful ordinance, or the discipline and performance removal of the occupant of a public office when the public body is given power to remove the occupant under lawful ordinance. Is there a motion?
I'll make the motion to go into closed session.
Second, please. Okay, can you have a roll call, please?
Ms. Bernstein?
Yes.
Ms. Christian?
Yes.
Mr. Glavinter?
Yes.
Ms. Gill? Ms. Yon?
Yes.
Ms. Unical?
Yes.
Okay, motion passes, we're going to go into closed session. Okay. At 9:27 and a half, we are back in general session. Okay, the next item on the agenda is agenda building. Going forward, we're going to be having the issues with the trustee appointment, some additional meetings and times in the next few months to deal with that. Next meeting, we will be hopefully approving a draft levy. And we will be discussing Annual Staff Appreciation Week and what we would like to do for that. You know, we'll adjourn the meeting.